Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 3rd Board of Alderman meeting. 7:00 PM. Can I get a motion to approve the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments, changes? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion passes. All right, we will move on to outside the rail. Is there anyone who wishes to speak from outside the rail for items that are not on the agenda this evening? Items not on the agenda.
Oh, no, they're...
Okay.
They're on the agenda.
All right, hearing and seeing none. Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you very much. So hello, everyone. Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. One, I had a memo in your packet asking for a referral on the parking garage issues. The city attorney has been busy, and so have I, speaking with both the state and LAS to come to a tentative agreement with both of those. And then we, I think the budget has already been referred to committee, but if we could get all those three things into, I believe it is the Finance Committee, and have a meeting, and hopefully we could do all three in one shot. So a referral is what I'm asking for.
Alderman Davis, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to refer to the Finance Committee, the revised lease with the state, the renewal of the service agreement with LAS, and the proposed 22-23 budget for the garage.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussions, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. And just the other thing, real quickly, and I did mention this to a couple of the Aldermen before the meeting started. Now that we're fully aware of who the purchaser of the main campuses at CSJ, the Community and Economic Development Committee had put a pause on the study going forward on the campus, and I think the discussion was heading toward whether we should focus on the west campus. And now that we, as I said, now that we know, I would like to see that study continue on unabated, and however we can facilitate that is certainly up to the board. I know there's a meeting coming next week, and, you know, a week pause probably isn't going to hurt anything, but I'd just like to get the message out to the community that we have every intention of moving forward on that, because I think there's all sorts of potentials as far as housing goes for that west campus. I believe it's thirty-some acres, but it's a good chunk of land, so that's all I have.
Alderman Talbot.
So I asked that my report be deleted, and we're aiming to meet again next week, so hopefully something will come out of that meeting, and then I'll...
Okay. Okay. Great. Super. That's all I got. Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda. It sounds like Alderman Talbot has deletion. Is there anyone else? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of deleting Alderman Talbot's report?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Okay. It's been removed. All right, moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Treasurer Markowski requests for approval of lease proposal for the refurbished fire ladder number one to be emailed to everyone.
Hi, everyone. I did email rather late this afternoon, so I hope you have it. I had planned to bring a proposal for financing of that truck, but just in reviewing the numbers and my comfort level, I, there is no rush that we get into a financing agreement. Right now, the truck won't be ready until the spring, so I reviewed it with the chief today and would ask, or just like to delay that for consideration in maybe January, February. I looked at a lot of things. We have plenty, we have cash in that fund. We could pay for it and not incur additional interest. There are some things that came out of the ARPA meeting, maybe requiring some of the funds out of that, so I'd like to wait and see where we are, what it looks like in January, and pursue that. Does anyone have questions?
Alderman Davis.
Not a question, but more procedural. So the truck will go ahead and be built?
Correct. Yep.
So I guess my question is to city attorney, do we need a motion to postpone the decision on funding, how we fund the equipment till January, or is it, as long as it... Well, there was a motion. There was a motion that came out of committee that talked about $200,000 coming from the equipment replacement fund to offset the borrowing. So do we need to rescind that motion, or just put another amendment on?
I don't know if it, I don't know if it may make sense to just amend when the treasurer has a proposal. So for now, she's not planning to use that financing method.
Correct.
But I think that when she proposes something, then the board could amend it at that, instead of having extra motions now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay?
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski. Moving on to Superintendent Peters, request to sell, Tyler looks like he's here.
I will.
Request to sell the 2008 Savannah van, page two of your packets.
Good evening. I guess to give you a little background story, Bob Protavansky at the wastewater treatment plant had actually approached the rec department a few months ago. They were looking to purchase a new truck. Once they found out one of their vehicles at DPW was no longer able to be inspected. So we had a van at the time that we weren't using for anything, so we had lent it to Bob to use in the meantime. He has gone out to look for vehicles. I mean, we all kind of know what the shortage is out there right now for vehicles. He's approached, I think, Dodge, Chevy, Toyota, all those folks. They're actually not honoring contract pricing right now for State of Vermont vehicles because they can sell it to the average individual for much more money. So he had asked me if we would consider selling them the van that they were using at the time. We don't need it. Obviously, more than happy to help out other departments when we can, so Bob and I kind of chatted. We went through the Kelley Blue Book value of the 2008 Savannah van based on the condition that it was in. The resale, based on Kelley Book, was $13,342. We had asked that the purchase price from DPW wastewater would be $10,000 for those folks to then be added to our equipment replacement fund. So we had chatted with Mary and the mayor, had a board of finance meeting. I can't remember if it was the last or the one before, and they had asked that we come and present this to the Board of Alderman for your folks' approval.
Alderman Depoy.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion passes.
And I'd like to make a motion to authorize the sale of the 2008 Savannah van for $10,000 from the rec department to the DPW wastewater department.
Second.
We have a motion to sell the van. It has been seconded. Any discussions, questions, or comments? Alderman Depoy.
With the money to go into the rec maintenance equipment replacement fund, sorry.
Great, thank you for the, yep, that's great. Any other questions, comments, discussions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tyler.
Thank you.
All right, just real quick, before we move on, the Parking Committee, I know that some of you are here probably for the Parking Committee report. That's not on the agenda this week. It'll be in the next Board of Alderman meeting. You're welcome to stay if you like. We have to get some other documentation to make sure that's all done correctly for that Forest Street stuff, but I just want to make sure that you don't wait if you don't want to. It'll be the next Board of Alderman meeting will be the Parking Committee update. You're welcome. Two weeks.
Seventeen.
Thank you for coming in, though. If you're welcome to stay. I just didn't want you to wait through the whole meeting. Okay, moving on. Attorney Blumer, Corcel Building Program Utilization Amendment and Concession Agreement that was emailed. Attorney Blumer.
Okay, it's just my son that has COVID. I'm negative still, so hopefully whatever I say here isn't going to infect anybody.
Are you negative?
Still. All right. So I had provided you with a memo. The gist of it is that when the Corcel building was donated to the city by the federal government, there was a program of utilization that was agreed to, and at the time, the city didn't know whether it was going to build the new rec department or not, but it said if it didn't, that it would house basically the entire entirety of the rec department plus the maintenance division at Corcel. So that is what ended up happening, and that was the way that it was for quite some time. But obviously, with the purchase of the CSJ athletic complex, there's been a slight change to that, which would require a proposal, a proposed amendment to that particular program of utilization. In addition to that, because the space in the front of the Corcel building is open, Kim has talked to a couple different groups, and we've kind of run it by the National Park Service, who kind of oversees the approvals, and they've at least given us some indication that they would be open to the idea of the Community Care Network going into that space. And so there's a, that's part of this amended POU. And then the other document that I provided is the actual concession agreement, which is basically a lease, but that's the, that's sort of the document that National Park Service recommended that we use. So there's two things that need to occur. We need to authorize us to submit the proposed amendment to the program of utilization, and then also authorize the form of the concession agreement. So I can provide additional information if you'd like, or if you have a chance to read and you don't need any additional information, that's great, too. I think it would probably be a two-part, or not a two-part motion, it could be two motions, one for the program, the amendment to the program of utilization, and the second for the concession agreement. Dick Corcel is here in the event that there's any questions about the concession agreement from his perspective. He's the head of Regional Mental Health, which is, I believe, the Umbrella Organization for Community Care Network. So he is available if he's, if anyone has questions for him.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Corcel or the city attorney before we make the motion? Do you have the motion for?
Yes, somewhere I do.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second. Great. The motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
So the first motion would be to authorize the city attorney to submit the proposed program of utilization amendment in substantially the form presented to the National Park Service on behalf of the city. So moved.
Second. We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
And then the second motion would be to approve the concession agreement with Community Care Network in substantially the form presented pending approval from the National Park Service.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussions, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, good.
We have an executive session from Attorney Blumer, which will move to the end of the meeting. Moving on to reports of standing committees. Alderman Depoy, Recreation Main Street Park.
Thank you, Mr. President. I distributed the report to everybody's desk. The Recreation Committee met on September 20th at 5:30. Members present were myself, Alderman Savage, Davis, and Tadio. Others present were Alderman Franco, Dungus, Itori, and Barbara Gallo. And from the rec department was Superintendent Peters, Tyler Dolan, and they also brought in Ed Clark. Also present was Mayor Laer and Chief Lovett and Gordon from the Herald. So Kim Peters and Tyler Dolan came in to update the rec committee on some ideas and pictures about what the Main Street Park renovation could look like, as well as some thoughts about renovations and/or replacement of the bandstand. Ed Clark of NFB was in attendance with some sketches of the ideas. The first idea was to leave the bandstand around the same height that it is now, and there would be a raised, they would raise the entire walkway up from the southeast corner to the level of the bandstand. The second was to drop the bandstand down to 18 inches to 24 inches above ground level and have a ramp for handicap access. The third idea dealt with the walkways through the park. The first is the status quo where the walkways come straight in from the four corners directly to the bandstand in the center. The other idea is to have the walkways kind of sway back and forth as they approach the bandstand. And in an informal poll of the committee members, they seem to prefer the lowered bandstand with the curvy walkways coming into the bandstand, and that's, I'm included in that preference. Tyler and Ed Clark told us that the roof, the current roof is about three years old and could possibly be recycled for use on the new bandstand, so I think they're going to look into that. It was replaced only three years ago, so it's in pretty good shape from what I understand. The support building was also talked about as being a control center for the electrical infrastructure for the park, as well as bathrooms and storage area. We also talked about an overhang for picnicking or small gatherings if there's any inclement weather, or just to get out of the sun, and that could be attached to the support building if the funds would allow. No actual motions came out of the meeting, and the issue will remain in committee for further discussion. Ed Clark does have some renderings that he brought to the committee on the 20th. If anybody would like to view them, I can arrange that. Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if I could just add, I was at the meeting, and I think toward the end, I encouraged Kim and everybody at the rec department, as well as this board, to, you know, reach out to members of the community to make sure that we've got their input as much as we possibly can about what they would like to see in Main Street Park. And so I had noticed that there was some chatter, not that I'm a regular Facebook user, but I did manage to see a little bit of chatter from the musician groups in town, or quite a few other people, and kind of disappointed that, you know, their ideas of having some sort of a, you know, a place for, at the corridor of the park to play music. I'm not exactly sure what they were calling it, but I don't know if it would be permanent or movable, other than just the bandstand. So I only raised that not to, you know, change the direction that everybody's going, because I think we've got a pretty good plan there, but just to make sure everybody's aware that we're trying to get everybody's input, and if anyone still has any suggestions out there, now would be the time to do it. Or I say, say forever hold your peace, because this project will move forward, and we just want to make sure that everybody is heard and nobody's left out. So that's really the gist of what I wanted to say.
Alderman Depoy.
Yeah, and thanks, Mr. Mayor. As this has kind of progressed over the last year or more, Tyler and I had spoken, and some others, we had talked about possibly moving the bandstand and making more of an amphitheater where it projects directly out into the park from the corner. And that, I mean, would obviously be an appealing idea for bands to be able to project their sounds directly out instead of having them spread in four, five, you know, in 360 degrees. So we have given that quite a bit of consideration, and as I said, these are preferences at this point. Nothing is in stone, and as the mayor said, if there's, you know, anybody out there who would like to comment more and, you know, further on this, by all means, our ears are open here at the board and at the city level. I know that the rec department has been taking the pulse of the community with some polling, asking questions, that sort of thing. So, you know, if you feel strongly enough about this issue, get down to the rec department and, you know, just give your thoughts on it to them down at the rec and at the community center, because it is open for debate at this point and discussion, so thank you.
Yeah, if they want to get a hold of the mayor's office, or the Board of Alderman, president of the board, or, you know, any Tyler, you know, now's the time.
So Kim, just, I guess for clarification, so Kim has a survey out on the internet, I believe it's off of Facebook, that we've had over 150 folks already put their input in and out on. At the community center, when you come into the right as you're walking down towards the couple fitness rooms, the renderings of what our foot look like are up on the wall, and they've got like the dots, and you can kind of place your vote along. So there is, I don't know if the God Nick Center does have anything yet, but there is all kinds of information. We are trying to get out there the best we can, and if anybody's got any questions, please call and ask, and we're more than happy to chat and get folks' opinions, so.
Alderman Davis, then Alderman Talbot.
Well, I was just going to say, I think the poll came out like a Google document or something, and you could sign into it and just, it shows you the renderings, and you can choose the one, two, or three, and then there's an opportunity to comment as well, if you want to add additional comments. So I encourage folks to look for that, or call the rec center and find out how to access it.
I think you should remove the comments function on the Facebook stuff, because sometimes your comments are not positive, not, not what we're going for, you know?
Alderman Talbot.
So I did share it on Facebook, and probably 10 or more people messaged me to, all musicians to share what the mayor had said, that one, two, or three didn't work for them, because playing music in a gazebo facing other musicians is less than ideal. So I guess I would just want to know from you and Kim what I can tell those members of the community, like why we didn't go with a design that was conducive to playing music, and we're going with continuing the gazebo design.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Alderman Itori, Public Works Water Policy Change.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee met on September 21st to discuss, to get a water meter project update from Commissioner Rotundo. I served as chair. Other members present were Alderman Barbara Gallo, Gillum, and Whitcomb. Other Aldermen present were Alderman Dungus and Talbot. Others present, like Crew today, on this day, Commissioner Rotundo, Gail Grusso, DPW Business Manager, and Treasurer Mary Markowski. The meeting convened at 5:31 PM to get an update on the water meter installation project that began in 2018. The beginning of the project to, the beginning of the project to install a fully automated meter reading system throughout our service area saw a number of challenges, most specifically the dissolution of fathom and the need to replace them with multiple vendors. DPW sees the current billing system as reliable and stable, and about 50% of customers are enrolled with Watersmark as their account portal, where they can get real-time data for their meters. That is above the industry standard. Customer service is also in-house now. Most of the meters are able to be read in minutes, but about 365 accounts require the meter readers to drive by the actual accounts. This is due to some hardware and software issues, and the DPW team is working with the vendors to remedy the issues before signing off on future payments. There are 44 active accounts that still do not have the new meters installed. Five of these are commercial accounts, and the others are residential. The 39 residential accounts are being charged at a scheduled rate, which bases the charges on the number of bedrooms in the unit. Interestingly, about half of these residential accounts are being charged based on the number of people living in the unit, which is being self-identified by the account holder. This rate is not in documentation and will be phased out. DPW staff also discussed another issue that has arisen, the rising number of delinquencies. Treasurer Markowski noted that the state's program to help residents pay delinquent utility bills, named VRAP, was used widely to help keep, help people keep current, but others have not or were not eligible. One important contributor to the rising delinquencies is the accounts that are on the scheduled rate, which basically at a two-person per bedroom, there are some people who are getting a $750 bill every quarter. Because of this, DPW worked through the city attorney and through a third-party attorney to create a new water shut-off policy, so that they could shut off the water supply to a property with a delinquent account. The policy was developed in accordance with Public Service Board regulations. It is thought that this will be a helpful tool to use in collections before balances are allowed to get too high. Currently, the only mechanism to collect is to tax-sell the property. Members present voiced concern for those who are unable to pay, and particularly for those who may need the water supply for heat in the winter. Because DPW considers this an internal administrative policy, the board's input is advisory, but DPW staff agreed to hold off any shut-offs during the winter months and to use the policy judiciously. The treasurer noted her office's role in collections and the importance of the two offices working together. Meeting adjourned at 6:30, and this is for information only.
Is there any questions for Alderman Itori, Ana Tadio?
Is there a reason that the board has no say over this? This is just how it is? I just think that this policy is incredibly inhumane, and during a public health emergency, meaning COVID, I would hate to see the water being shut off for anybody, and I appreciate the compassion in not shutting off the water during winter months, but I'm really disappointed in this policy. And I wish that there was something that we could do to change that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Alderman Itori. Alderman Franco, General Evergreen Cemetery, General Committee Evergreen Cemetery, report.
Thank you. The General Committee met on September 26th. Members present included myself, Alderman Tadio, Alderman Savage. Others present included President Dungus, Alderman Davis, Alderman Talbot, Commissioner Rotundo, Mayor Laer, Alderman Whitcomb, Alderman Itori, Paula McCann, John Ween, Rick Bove, and Heather Bork. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The General Committee met to discuss the ongoing maintenance and financial issues at Evergreen Cemetery. President of the Evergreen Cemetery Board, Paula McCann, opened the discussion with an overview of the current status of the cemetery and specific requests from the city. The president stated that the annual financial needs range from $65,000 to $75,000, which has become near impossible to fund with the existing business model. The overall annual operating budget sits at around $90,000, with incoming revenue at only $35,000. Many plots are held by families that no longer have living members to fund their plots, and as a result, Evergreen is expected to host an annual meeting soon at which maintenance fees will be introduced and discussed. Since presenting the board to the Board of Alderman at an earlier meeting, the cemetery's board has made progress on several fronts. This includes finding a private donor to fund the new database services that will help organize and store records. Additional fundraisers and revenue sources, such as charging for employee wellness programs that use the cemetery for walks, are also being explored. McCann requested assistance from the city in the form of tree and road maintenance, in addition to assistance with the historical records. Commissioner Rotundo was not able to commit to maintenance assistance upfront, but his team will conduct a site visit to gather more information and more context. Several other sources of fundraising and revenue were proposed by other board members. Alderman Talbot suggested the cemetery seek recognition on the historical registry, given the number of Vermont dignitaries who are buried on the site. Alderman Whitcomb suggested the board send a resolution to the Vermont Congressional delegation to advocate for funding, which received wide support from the committee. Rick Bove offered maintenance assistance from the Moose Lodge members, which is, they've performed similar community service activities in the past. Alderman Talbot also suggested collaborating with Castleton faculty familiar with grant programs that could be of use. No action was taken by the committee, but I will be working with the president of the board for the cemetery to craft proposed language for the resolution to send to the Vermont Congressional delegation, and I'll bring that to the board at a later date to discuss that.
Great. Any questions for Alderman Franco? Awesome. Moving on. Alderman Whitcomb, Finance, ARPA requests, Fire and Police Department, Center Street redesign, Wi-Fi downtown, and City Hall upgrades.
Thank you. So the Finance Committee met on September 29th. The umbrella topic was an ARPA funds review. Within that was Center Street redesign project, Fire Department, City Hall, and downtown Wi-Fi. It was also warned for police requests, but I will get to that. We were unable to cover that in the meeting. Members present were Alderman Davis, Savage, Talbot, and Whitcomb. Others present were Mayor Laer, President Dungus, Alderman Franco, Alderman Gillum, Kate Langley, Andrew Strinsky, Chief Kocullen, there should be an asterisk next to that, again, I'll explain at the end, Mark Sadorkierski, Treasurer Markowski, Bill Lovett, and Brendan Duffy. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The meeting opened with a review of a half-million-dollar funding request for Center Street redesign and scoping study. It was explained that the money requested would be used to leverage additional funding for this project. It was noted that we are likely four years away from initiating the project. Alderman Davis inquired what half-a-million dollars would buy the city. Brendan explained that the money would be used predominantly for grant matches. Additionally, it was noted that there may, there may be any potential projects that could emerge as a result of the Center Street redesign throughout the downtown. Chief Lovett then presented the Fire Department's ARPA request for self-contained breathing apparatus, or air packs. So please see the attached for the document outlining the Fire Department's... So please see the attached for the document outlining the Fire Department's ARPA request, which was presented during the meeting. Alderman Davis inquired if it was possible to cut the request in half and utilize existing fire equipment fund. Chief Lovett shared his concern with utilizing the equipment replacement fund and its potential impact on future needs. Treasurer Markowski asked if there was room in the operational budget to offset a portion of the cost. Alderman Torey echoed the thought of Alderman Davis stating that he supports a portion of funding coming from the fire equipment replacement fund and not just solely from ARPA money. Mark Satakirske outlined items throughout City Hall in need of repair with a total ARPA request of $52,000. The projects outlined and their corresponding costs are attached in a memorandum presented by Mark. Alderman Franco provided an update regarding the request for funding for downtown city Wi-Fi. Alderman Franco suggested earmarking money toward downtown Wi-Fi for $300,000 as a suggested amount to put toward the project. Alderman Davis suggested identifying what other funding sources could be available first prior to committing any ARPA funding. The Police Department requests originally warned for this meeting were not presented due to a scheduling conflict. The meeting adjourned at 6:13 PM and this report is for informational purposes only. So if I could really quick, we did know ahead of time that Chief Kocullen did have a conflict and was going to hopefully present to us last. Unfortunately, he walked in 30 seconds after we had adjourned. So that being said, an updated warning did go out today, but I'll put it out for the public and for everyone here that we have added Chief Kocullen and the Police Department ARPA request to our Finance Committee meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at 5:30.
Great. Any questions for Alderman Whitcomb? Alderman Torey?
Just a note for the chair, I appreciate having some, you know, that I said something, but if you could put me on the attendance that I was there as well. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Moving on, reports of select committees, we have none. Reports of representatives, we have none. Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, none. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, none. Unfinished businesses, are there any unfinished business to come before the board? Looks like we have none. All right, moving on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions and new business. Alderman Franco, Economic Development Strategy and corresponding structural changes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked tonight that on our agenda be this item, which is Economic Development Strategy and corresponding structural changes, mostly because of one truth, and that's that we have a really exciting moment here ahead of us in Rutland with many developments underway. From the Hub Co-Works, which is starting downtown with being led by Cedar and is, you know, scheduled to produce a number of workforce development opportunities, startup and incubation support and entrepreneurship efforts, to the Paramount, which is, as we know, something we have supported in terms of their efforts to produce more conference space that we know will be important to the economic vitality of our region. The list goes on and on. And I think that we can all agree that this is a pivotal moment that we as a city need to be strategically involved in. But what I've noticed is that although there's a lot of exciting development underway in Rutland today, a lot of these developments are being done in silos. There's no strategic vision, there's no plan that's pooling together these pieces into a cohesive strategy by which we can measure our progress, by which we can know that we are getting the biggest bang for our buck, so to speak, by which we are returning on our investment for our city taxpayers. And that to me is alarming. And so as I've started to try to think about how we are trying to meet that effort, I've come to the reality that our current structural setup for progressing economic development really is in one specific area and that's redevelopment. It's one piece of the larger economic development approach. And as the board's representative to the Rutland Redevelopment Authority, which is how we currently try to put forth any initiatives or efforts in redevelopment, I took it upon myself to look into some of the progress that we have made toward what is outlined in our contract agreement with the double RA. If you can recall, I'm sure we all remember, back in October, we had a look back at which we were supposed to discuss the RA's progress based on the contracted agreements. There are four, excuse me, five outlined responsibilities that the RA must meet in our contract. Those span grant administration, grant list and job development, blighted properties, downtown and growth center designations and planning. Only two of those, or really three of them, do we get quarterly reports on, which is how we're able to gauge our progress under those umbrellas. We are eternally grateful for the work that I know Barbara does with grant administration and so there's a clear record of how that's gone. I think we can all say that there's grant administration being performed. But as I've looked through the quarterly reports which outline the activities for grant list and job development and housing and blighted properties, it's unfortunate that looking at this, the numbers show 90% of the work, 90% of the work being done under grant list and job development is led by another entity that's not the RA. So either Cedar or Planning Commission or it's contracted out. 90%. Meanwhile, in housing and blighted properties, 75% of the activities that we are funding are being led by an external entity or contracted out. And the two programs that we have a direct hand in through the RA, the Tax Stabilization Program and the City Owned Properties Program have had, the first has had zero applicants in the last year and the second has seen seven reviews of properties. I bring this all up not to just stir trouble or to point the finger at any one person or personal beef, but I bring this up because we have a contract agreement with an entity that is supposed to provide services, which is the one area of economic development that we are focusing on. And I believe that there's a misalignment with what we as a city are heading toward with all the development underway and what is being performed, which is largely showing and proving to be passive participation. That is, we are not actively initiating economic development strategies, coming up with a plan, stating objectives, showing the measurable growth, or even creating the redevelopment plan which is required by state law by this entity. That is to say that I believe we do need to take action as a board in order to readjust and move toward a new pathway, one whether that be in-house or however else we're able to find a proposed solution, but one that is more visionary, that is more proactive and that will actually deliver outcomes for our residents. For that reason, I do want to propose a motion tonight that I believe is important to bring to the board, however we want to pursue, whether we want to pursue it tonight or however we want to see fit, but the motion does need to be out there to have a clear pathway forward so that we know that we are actually using our taxpayers' dollars to actually further economic development in very clear terms. And so I would, I make, I would like to make the motion tonight. Again, we can have a discussion around it, but the motion is really to seize the distribution of the budget allocation for the double RA in the amount that would be its current base, which is roughly $56,000 per quarter, without the allocation for the executive director. That would mean that we would be able to reduce our scope to grant administration, which is largely where we're seeing the most success in the redevelopment authority currently and would open up our ability to allocate resources toward more proactive economic development strategies with other entities. So I want to put that out on the floor for discussion and to hear the board's thoughts.
Okay. Before.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Exactly. So we need a motion to suspend the rules?
Sure. Well, okay. Motion to suspend the rules.
Okay. There are motions to suspend the rules. Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules has been seconded.
Roll call, vote.
Roll call, vote. Tracy, could you please take the roll?
Can I, can I clarify?
There's no debate.
There's no debate.
I'm not debating, I'm asking for point of clarification.
Roll call, vote.
Point of clarification?
No, not under suspension of the rules.
Point of information?
Not under suspension of the rules.
That's not a debate, that's a point of information.
What would you like to?
Do you need to suspend the rules for actions other than taking tonight, for instance, tabling?
Tabling and, and referrals don't need a motion to suspend the rules.
All right, thank you. Because I would like to see this discussed tonight, so.
So a motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. There's a roll call, vote.
You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Alderman Torey?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Savage?
Yes.
Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderman Tadio?
Yes.
Alderman Whitcomb?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
No.
Alderman Depoy?
No.
And Alderman Davis?
No.
Six to three.
Motion fails. Needs to be a fourth, three-fourths majority to suspend the rules.
I would still like to make the motion to table this and actually for a different reason, so I'll make the motion to table and then I can supply additional comment.
Great. We have a motion to table.
Oh, it's not debatable, so let me, let me just make a comment first. I do think that there's an opportunity here for us to make it, make a clear pathway, like I said, and I think in speaking to the chair of the double RA, there's openness here for willing tonight to put this out and table it for that, to lead to discussions at the RA board level. That would mean that this would still be a motion we would all be considering, but would provide other opportunities if those were to be discussed by the double RA board. So I will move to table.
Motion to table. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. All right. Is there anything else in your report or questions? Alderman Franco?
No, I just, I will, I am happy to provide an update. I'm glad that we're having this discussion and I thank the board for willing to hear me out tonight because I think that this is really important to the economic vitality of our community and really and truly, this is about finding a path forward in the city's best interest. So it's unfortunate that there wasn't widespread support for simply doing that, but, I mean, there is widespread support, but there wasn't a unanimous vote. But I, I think certainly, you know, thank you to those board members who are seeing that we need to make progress for our city.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Franco. Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions or new business? Alderman Torey?
I'm going to make a motion to refer to Community Economic Development Committee a discussion of economic development strategy.
Okay, a motion to.
Second.
Thank you. Motion refers, but second, discussion.
Thank you. I put the motion on the floor to actually have the discussion that Alderman Franco wants to have. I, it is no secret that my concern of the RA goes back almost a decade from when I first started attending those meetings as a member of the Downtown Partnership Board and the issues that they were having with the redevelopment authority. That continued as my time on the Board of Aldermen and as a rep to the RA about collaboration and the lack of collaboration and the lack of active projects. And I worked with the executive director a number of times and had conversations in person and continued to feel stymied. We had projects like the bump outs where even the Master Gardeners, a group of retired, mostly retired women, came to complain about the executive director and not willing and not collaborating with them on the planters, on things like this. The story is long and involved and goes back many, many years. I am not a fan of doing this the way Alderman Franco has proposed. When you all talked about this last October, I was not on that board for that year and I said that, at the meeting, that I did not believe we should defund the RA, that an idealized RA with business leaders and real estate leaders, economic development professionals that are in this community, that that board, if that board was made up of those kind of people and an executive director who took action, it could be absolutely the right entity to make things move forward because it doesn't have to deal with political things and it can respond to the needs of the people who are really doing the work. That is not what we have here. We have, we are, the RA itself, I believe, is broken. We have what, eight members, seven members maybe, eight members? There's a couple of open seats. Getting people to be a part on that board is hard. People are looking to leave, but they don't want to leave because there's nobody else there. It's not in good shape and so I'm not sure what the right strategy is. I have tried in every number of ways through the years, but I'm, if somebody else had another idea, I would support it because something needs to be done. And so whether or not we actually send this to committee to talk about an economic development strategy is really irrelevant. I think it's important that we do have this conversation. I'm happy to table this issue and let the RA know that we have some serious concerns and that maybe they want to look at how they want to respond to those concerns. Thank you.
Alderman Whitcomb?
Thank you, President Dungus. Sort of to piggyback off Alderman Torey's point, I think to myself, if I've done one thing since I've been on this board, is that I've been painfully consistent. I may be one of the only people that compelled a meeting just for the sake of talking about an issue that I was so done with, I would have rather done anything else in the world, but I know the importance of having the conversation. We really can't run away from the fact that at least, you know, half of the members of this board have very serious questions about how the RA functions. Whether or not I agree with them actually matters very little to me at this point. I want to hear the concerns. I want to know what is it that we could potentially do better? You know, what is the right path for on the wrong path right now? Like, you know, do we have the right players? What is the thing to do? Talk to me about it. I want to hear it. I want to have a disgust. I really am uncomfortable just showing up and saying, "We're going to make this abrupt change without discussing every possible facet, every possible avenue." I think this is the right choice. I think tabling it ultimately leads to that opportunity to hear, "What does the RA think? What are they going to present with us?" And then come back in two weeks and we look at ourselves and say, "Okay, so maybe this is the direction we need to go right now to start to alleviate some of these very real concerns that many people share." I'm with Alderman Torey, I think this is the right step. We got to get this in committee. We've got to get on the same page. We do our best work when we're working together.
Any other comments or questions? Discussion, Alderman to point?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm listening to what's being said here and then I look back into my emails and I think back to some of the committee hearings that I have attended recently dealing with community and economic development and the projects that are coming to this board are coming from the RA. Whether it be Center Street, Downtown scoping, getting the, you know, the redesign for Center Street. RA was in there and there were several other business entities supporting a lot of what the RA was saying at the time. We had Cedar in there, we had Downtown Partnership was in there. You know, and I'm reviewing an email here that talks about some of that discussion. Also some ideas that people can go to a Dropbox and put in, I guess, you know, whatever they feel is, you know, what their thoughts are is how we could progress with Center Street. Also talking about the College of St. Joseph. I know that they've been involved in some of that with the Housing Authority. You know, there's other things that have come up from the RA. We have a house down on, is it Maple Street, that's getting completely renovated. I know there was some problems with the cost of it, but then we had other housing entities come in and say, "Those are in line with what we're paying to renovate or rehab or build, you know, the projects that we're working on." So we are getting things from the RA. Is there a plan? Yeah, there's a plan. I've known about plans for the last 15 years that I've been on this board, 16 years, my God. So it's, it's one of those things where I hear this stuff and I'm listening and the points that are being made aren't actually valid points at this point as far as I can see because we are getting these projects from the RA. I do hear about grants that are coming through from the RA and yeah, a lot of that is Barbara writing them, but there's a lot of direction from the executive director on those as well. Those don't get funded if the executive director doesn't have an input into that stuff. So, you know, to say that the RA is failing to the point where we want to dismantle them, I just, I don't see it. I don't see the need for that. I do see results from the RA and I think that this is just completely unnecessary use of our time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Alderman Torey?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman DePoy, I really appreciate your.
Mr. President, can you please have the member direct his comments to you and not to me directly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I appreciate Alderman DePoy's comments tremendously because those are exactly the, the comments that I have heard from other folks as well. And so if I could just take the, some of the examples that Alderman DePoy used to kind of elucidate what, where some of my concerns are. When we talk about the Center Street scoping study, if you talk to the people who were a part of the actual scoping study, so some of the other entities that led that group, if you talk to the consultant, you will understand the role that Brennan played in that organization and in that scoping study coming to fruition. And that's where the concern comes in. We talk about CSJ. We were encouraged to put thirty-two thousand dollars on a, of our money for a private development on CSJ campus when just a month or two later, Casella's purchased it. I'm sure Casella's was having conversations, and so our economic development person isn't have a good relationship with the Casella company in order to know some of that information and be a little bit aware for them. The Maple Street project, they brought it to the RA. He did not create the project. Yes, he brought it forward because that's the process, but they came to him. And what's happening here is that he is serving as a gatekeeper, not a facilitator. He has described himself as that. I want to go back to the Center Street thing because I forgot the piece. We didn't get a copy of that scoping study, and that was on purpose by the RA director to not give it to us until after that meeting. It was offered to pass out to us, we did not get it. We could have had questions at that Center Street scoping study. We did not, we did not have the study. That is the way, just some of the ways that the organization is failing us. Is this the right strategy? No. I do think it's too much to fix these issues, but I've been at a loss. I've been working on these for dec, almost a decade now. We need to do something.
Alderman Franco.
Thank you. I just wanted to hit on a couple of things that were brought up, because I can understand, you know, as a board member, you receive the quarterly reports. It looks like there's a lot, there's a lot of words on these documents, and it looks like a lot's being done, but I think it's really actually reading them and analyzing where you would understand that half of them are participatory. They are passive participation. It's, we continue to have discussions. It is vague terminology. It is broad collaboration. These terms are not proactive, actual strategies with objectives that show us where we are. That is the point. And I went through every single one since October twenty-twenty-one and outlined eight, the eight to ten tasks that repeatedly show up in these reports that show that these are actually being led by other entities. That is, that is my point. Aside from even what's being reported to us, right, the contract itself specifically says what needs to be conducted by the RA. That includes several things that are not being done now. Planning is a given responsibility. City planning for the city falls under the double RA in our contract. You can look at it. And the executive director has stated upfront that that is not his role, is not his capacity or expertise, and that our zoning and planning department should handle it, and that he broadly collaborates with them. That is not what's specified in the contract. Furthermore, we have, we do have a master city plan, not that that's really been updated much or is an actual plan, but there's also a secondary redevelopment plan that the state says we have to create. And when I brought this concern to the double RA board, I was told that they were unaware, unaware that there's a statutory requirement. And since I brought that concern several months back, nothing has been done to actually initiate one. So we're not talking about, we don't have to get into the nitty gritties to understand there is an issue here, and you can't ignore the facts. They are on, they're in the reports, they're in the contract, they're required by the state. I don't understand where the pushback is coming, because really and truly, we all care about the city, or at least we all should. We care about the interests, we care about our taxpayers, we care about having progress, and I don't understand why there would be pushback on trying to ensure that that is happening. So that is, I'll leave it there.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Alderman Gillum, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Alderman Gillum first, and then.
Go with the mayor first. Would you like to go first, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. I just got a couple of things that I've been thinking about as I'm listening to the debate. First thing, it goes back to when I got started in all of this quite a few years ago, and I was a freshman alderman. First person I met coming into the door was Sharon Davis. She showed me up to the room and, and showed me where my seat was going to be, and I said, "Thank you very much." And then I talked to a couple of people that were board members there, and there was a discussion that night about economic development, don't you know? And economic development is an issue that I don't think there's a select board, or Board of Aldermen, or mayor's office, or anything that doesn't want to focus on economic development. But if you ask them exactly, "What, what, what does economic development mean? What is it to you?", you're going to get a thousand different answers, because there's no direct answer to that question. It's many different things to many different people. And it's probably, as I learned, as I got up to Montpelier and talked with those folks about the same thing, uh, different governors, different legislators, uh, everybody wants to do economic development, but they're not really a hundred percent sure how they do it, and it's probably the hardest thing that they're ever going to have to do. And I think that that's probably the truth. Are there better ways to do it than we're doing it now? Perhaps there are. I'm glad to have that discussion. When I found out about the motion that was going to be coming up tonight, it was two and a half hours before the meeting started. It was Thomas coming into my office, and I appreciate you coming in and talking to me about that, but I would have loved to have had at least a little bit more of an opportunity to think about things and perhaps have more of something put together that I can not necessarily rebut, because I'm not rebutting what you, what you're saying, but I, but maybe have a different view on, on exactly what, you know, how you're thinking about things and how certain members of the Board of Aldermen, not the whole Board of Aldermen, are thinking. I think it's pretty unfair to have this discussion without Brennan being here to defend himself. I think that's unfortunate, but we are. I heard an awful lot of talk from a lot of the aldermen about a collaborative approach, collaborative approach to not just economic development, but everything else. Well, I've tried in my six years as mayor to be just that, collaborative. When I had a, an idea or wanted to put something forward, the first group of people that I put it forward to was the Board of Aldermen, and of course, the taxpayers of the city around who we are work for. And that's the approach that I've taken, and I hope, and maybe this is the message that I can deliver to some of the folks that don't always come in and see me on a regular basis, that my door's open, and if you've got an issue, whether it's economic development with the RA, or it's public works, or it's the police department, or it's the fire department, then you'll come in and talk to me about it, rather than just throw it out there at the Board of Aldermen meeting. And that's all I ask. That's, that's really all I ask, that it's a two-way street. And I, hopefully, people will see clear. We'll have this discussion in, in committee. I'm happy to be a part of it if I'm invited. I intend on coming, and, and have it be a positive discussion and try to answer some of the concerns that, that folks have here. The RA is a separate organization. They have their own board. The, the Board of Aldermen has a member that's supposed to be there each and every meeting, contributing to, to the discussion, so, you know, there are ways to, to get to the end that, that I think you all are trying to get there. So those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Gillum.
I was here when they designed the redevelopment authority, and we approved it by the taxpayers. We brought it to them to set out, set up an outside concern that would work primarily on economic development issues and progress of the city of Rutland. I can't tell you the many nights, and these two can attest to that, when I was the chair of community development at the time, we would go from Manchester all the way up to Middlebury on the rail yard. I know it wasn't successful, but what did come out of that? Rail improvements, track improvements, Amtrak, Middlebury Tunnel, Bell's Falls Tunnel, improvements to 103, improvements to Route Seven, improvements to the Route Four and Seven PAC that we put together, we work on Rutland Town, crosswalks. All that stuff took time, and it was only two people doing the roadshow. That was Matthew Sterberg and myself. We talked to select boards up and down Route Seven to make that happen. That's what this organization was set up for, is to collaborate with other towns, to collaborate with the investments from the private sector, and all the other organizations that deal with housing, roads, economic development, so on, so on, public safety. So to sit here and sort of tear it down without the, the RA board here present to defend themselves, the board, which directs the director, okay? He can't do anything without their vote. We set it up that way so it would not be political, because the economic development at one time was very political, because the mayor's office had complete control over it, and the aldermen didn't get one say about it. We turned that around with this economic, with the RA, so it wouldn't be political. How convenient it is right now we're bringing it all up because we have an election year coming up. I think this should be a football for politics. I really don't. This is not the right atmosphere to do that in. I think we got a lot of things coming up. We need to keep that team in place so we can continue to have the consistency. So, Mr. President, I feel that this witch hunt that we're going after here is not the right way to do this. I think we need to sit down with their board, the double RA board. We have a review every year with them on the direction with the contract we want them to go into. Now, that's the place where we need to do these things. When the review comes up, we change with the direction we want the RA to go. That should be put into the contract with the economic development contract with the RA. That's the place to do it, not dismantle it.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Whitcomb, and then Alderman Franco.
Yeah, I guess I'll just reiterate quickly and also say, echo the thoughts of the former alderman who spoke in, in the mayor, that, you know, we've got to be very delicate about how we approach this going forward. You know, within a couple of weeks, we may have allocated four-point-four million dollars, much of which is designed for economic development. I, I really feel strongly, we can't, we can't avoid the discussion. It's very real. We're very fragmented. The mayor's right. If you surveyed all of us, we'd all have a different opinion of what economic development is, but we, we are at a critical junction. We have to face this. We have to talk about it. We, we've got to come up with a plan, or at least it's something that resembles a roadmap that we can all get on board for. You know, election aside, all that, this is critical right now for the future of Rutland.
Alderman Franco.
Yes. I just wanted to say that while I do understand economic development is very broad, as someone who has a graduate degree focused on it, I can say that it's a very real field that has very real strategies, has very real evidence of what works, has very real outcomes, things like job creation, things like population, or maybe your workforce and the skill sets, the strategies, things we don't actually have a ton of insight on now because we don't have capacity in that space. I cannot be more clear. I work day in and day out with economic development leaders across this country who lead rural communities, much like ours, similar population, similar economic story, similar post-industrial base, and there's real capacity there. And there wouldn't be entities focused on economic development if it was so broad you couldn't even have a plan to put forward. I think it's alarming, it's truly alarming, that even in a two-hour heads-up, our top leadership cannot give us an idea of what economic development means for our city, or what strategies are in place, or what goals or objectives we have. And I think that that also bleeds in to this larger issue, and I will not ignore it. Our city deserves, our taxpayer deserves, taxpayers deserve to have real leadership in this space, to have real capacity and technical expertise that is very much available and that we can find and fill this position with. How we get there? Again, the RA will convene. We've had this discussion, we've tabled it. At this point, as the rep, I will work with the RA chair to move forward and hopefully bring a proposal, a solution for the remedy, to remedy the fact that much of our contracted services agreement is not being fulfilled, but I'm truly disappointed that this is seen as a witch hunt or an attack on anyone, on, on anyone, when this is really about the city's interests and our future. I will leave it at that, but again, we've voted.
Is there any further discussion? Questions or comments? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to res, to refer economic development discussions to the Economic Development Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. All right, moving on, it's time for our executive session. If we could get the motion to our executive session.
Sure. Motion to find the premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a labor relations agreement would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the agreement provisions to be negotiated.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Discussion, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the Human Resources Director, Commissioner of Public Works, Mayor, Treasurer, and City Attorney to discuss the labor relations agreement as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1B.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll turn for the executive session. See ya, chief.